Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Work Session. It's a little bit after 6:00 PM. We have four members present this evening. Councilman Henkin is thankfully home away from a sick, so better off. Mr. Cobbler, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Your first item on your agenda is a review of revised architectural elevations for the mixed-use buildings within Oviedo on the Park. You recall you had a work session on October the 26th, at which time you reviewed the architectural renderings for the different buildings and gave input to Mr. Kavanaugh and then asked that he bring back some -- he went off and revised the drawings, and so we're here tonight to seek your input once again. You are sitting as land use administrators tonight. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kavanaugh and Ms. Height and let them walk you through the different drawings.
Great, thank you. Tom?
Chris.
Chris can you grab a microphone?
I will. Can you sing with me? Chris Height, Dix Height, 150 West Jessup, Longwood. So, towards the end of the last work session, you all asked for a number of things relative to the architecture. You were looking for less beige, more articulation relative to, you know, the colorway on the buildings. You're also really curious in regards to how the elevations related to the associated landscape and requested to see a couple of key elevations with that depicted. In addition, you were really curious to see the new architecture and how it associated with the old architecture. And so we did a -- and you requested a photorealistic rendering, and so that's what we've produced here to the left. And so in regards to pulling it up on the screen, it'll be that upper-left image there. And so this is what we call the L-shaped building, has the retail down, and it's facing Oviedo on the Park across the street. I'm standing, basically, the fountain is, I mean, the Veterans Memorial is just to my left, Dog Park is behind me. I'm looking up the street. You can see the existing architecture to your right and then the new architecture to the left. Everything is realistic relative to placement of vegetation and the streetscape. We basically went out in the field, we took a picture from this point, and then we were able to work with the architects to place the actual two-scale architecture in the view. So frankly, it's as close as you're going to get to reality. So we were fortunate to be able to turn this around pretty quickly, and so you can kind of see the general character there. In the corner, you see the view shed, and it's pretty much what you guys asked to see. And then you're really curious, yeah?
It's so horrible. I thought it was a little closer.
I mean, we're really pleased with it, frankly. I mean, it looks pretty awesome, I think. I think it's really elevating the architecture. You know, if you look at what's across the street and then what this is going to be, it's pretty sweet, so.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Do you have two different designs, Park Place Apartments and then the new one? Do you think they go together? Do they kind of blend together, or do they clash?
I think they're different. I think they're different from a scale perspective. They're very similar, because, you know, we're keeping it to the human scale of three to four stories. I think in any real place, you should have some level of diversity in architecture. I think that makes a place more dynamic and rich. I don't, I find that, I don't think that the colors and the form is foreign as humans.
Are you seeing colors in the new building?
I mean, there's some beiges in the other buildings, so you're seeing beiges here. I mean, we're in Florida, so you tend to see certain colors that are appropriate to our environment. And the colors that are reflective in the Strand Two, as we call it, have actually been pulled from the park, so there's been some inspiration from the park. So I think architecturally, it, this developed building relates better to the park, certainly, and the elevated architecture in the park. I think you're going to see a really strong relationship there. One thing we did is we added nichihua, which is a pretty rich material. So you see that we've really added some depth there with the nichihua. And we took your comment relative to the beige to heart and really tried to limit the beige overall. Of course, you still have some beige, but you can see where we've added nichihua. Yes?
Let's clarify nichihua. Nichihua is a product-specific manufacturer. We are putting siding, cemented siding. I can't tell you if it's going to be, you know, nichihua or some, there's four or five huge siding manufacturers.
Yeah, that's a brand. It's like Kleenex.
It's very heavy, and it comes from overseas manufactured, so there are some issues with siding, with having some inappropriate material in it, so we need to do a little bit more homework. I just don't want to get fixated on nichihua.
It's kind of like Kleenex. It's a name for this sort of siding, but it has a really nice look. And then this is the same L-shaped building with the associated landscape, because you all were really concerned about scale. You felt like you were looking at the architecture but not really seeing it in context with the associated hardscape and landscape. So you can see here, we've kind of laid out the elevation, and then you can see the associated trees in the, you know, along the sidewalk and how that works with the architecture. So that's a pretty nice exhibit. Answers some of your questions from last week. So that's, this is, this elevation just flat?
Counsel, I think one thing about those elevations that I was showing you is that you actually get to see the articulation of the building. It's that when you're just looking at the flat color scheme, you can't really see it, but when you look down at the profile, I call the profile picture down below, you can actually start to see how the building moves and then how it relates with the landscaping and the hardscaping.
Yeah, so for example, that's a great point, because for example, on this four-story building, you can really see how, you know, that piece will be projected forward. There's a lot of movement as you go down the streetscape. You can see how we're accenting, you know, really trying to honor the architecture with strong landscape forms. We're framing the architecture. I mean, that's going to be a really strong architectural piece, so we're framing that out, and it starts to work together pretty well.
I have a quick question. The landscaping that's shown up there, is that on the existing or is that the proposed?
That's on the landscape plans to date that have been submitted.
There is another row, what I'm saying, because this faces the center, like, there is another row of landscaping in these.
That's correct.
That we just didn't show.
Yeah, that's correct.
It would have complicated things too much, so this landscaping that's here is actually on our property up against the building. There's another complete row of landscaping depending on where these elevated or at-grade planters fall.
Yeah, that's correct.
Sort of make sure what Park Place is now.
Well, it's, yes, yes, yeah. And the cool thing about this project is we did work to create streetscapes throughout, so you're going to have that, you're going to have the street tree layer as well as the building framing layer, so you're walking through landscape.
And the street trees are growing very nicely out there. You know, fast forward for 18 months when, you know, we'll ask for a CO here, those things are going to have another three, four, five feet of growth on them, so they're going to fill out very nicely.
So, anyway, I just, we have taken every single elevation, we've updated every elevation, and on the boards below, we have the befores and afters, just exactly what you have in front of you.
For example, this.
I can do it on that one, but one behind it.
This is the four-story one that we had extensive conversation about, there's too much, right, too much stuck on, and you can see from where we started.
Pretty big difference.
To where we ended.
Can you say that, Tom?
Started with the last conversation.
Uh-huh.
Ended.
Yep, so we really.
So there's more color, there's more siding, this whole layer of brick, if you look at it, let's just take this quieter and focus on that, just take a little bit of, so we have one, and then we have this two-story component here. I'll use, this is the D-mark right there. So we'll come back, this is the D-mark. Here's your original two-story. We've added that, that remained, and we've added that, and then both of these towers, okay, went to site.
So one cool thing was, one of the comments we had was, you know, the brick and the ground plane, kind of making that richer, trying to, except for we have kind of a nice accent, having a really nice continuous foundation to the building, and so we felt like that was pretty successful. Works really well.
And where is that side facing?
This is.
We only have one side plan? So that's the four-story.
Four-story.
It would be facing the lift station.
Go back to your images that you had.
So it's facing north. Yeah, because you only have two four-story elevations, one faces the lift station and the other one's going to face the top one.
Yeah, that's like the.
An L-shaped building like that.
Number eight, right, Tom? It's number eight?
Yeah, well, I can't see that far, but.
No, I think it'd be number four.
It would be actually nine and three and five.
Okay, nine and three, okay.
Yeah, four's in the corner, that's the B, so nine and three and then five, five would be facing that. They're symmetrical, both buildings are symmetrical, so if this is the elevation facing S4, it would also be the elevation facing nine.
And what does five look like?
I'm sorry, five. It would be on yours, it would be five and nine, it would be that elevation.
Okay.
Not sure where three is. Four's just a ledge in there, probably kind of a bridge.
The numbers, the numbers associate with the number on your packet. So it says five, that's sheet five of your drawings.
Right, so that's three and three, okay.
Do you have one drawing of fives, just so we could see it?
Sure we do.
See the same one? Am I correct? Is that correct? That this elevation, yeah, has to match the other.
Brian, when you mapped all that out, it was. What page?
October 30th. Five's the office building.
Oh, straight.
This is Strand.
Okay, well, the five is.
On this one, you have to ask, five is the retail on the bottom.
Remove the elevation, correct?
Mm-hmm. Five is the retail on the bottom.
Five would be the west.
That's your office.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing.
I was going by the.
Page five.
Page five.
This is page five. This is leasing on the street. Yeah, so here's five, and there's three. They're almost identical, except for this little part right here, which is the small mixed-use building in the corner.
Tom, let's try to figure out. Go to the left. Right there, what are those? Stairwells.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm not a percent sure, Steve. Where are these?
The stairs are.
Set back, okay, yeah. And 15 feet set back. Yeah, so in there, they're set back. You'll see these face out, well, upstairs.
And then somewhere in that shaft, there's an elevator in there somewhere.
Its interior, its interior to the elevator would be, you come into this, into a corridor, walk about 40 feet, and then the elevator would be there to the center. It's not up front. Yeah, four-story buildings have, definitely have an elevator.
Is that required, Tom, if you're doing four stories?
Yes, it is.
I like the three, I like the real version. That just makes the depth and actually what you can see through also. It puts those, the white frames, kind of really explains and makes you see what those really are and how you can kind of see through them, and you see other materials on the other side. It frames it, and then you can see through to the other materials.
You really got to look at this, where we have white on the other side, too.
Oh, yeah.
This white is going to complement, this white is on the other side.
Well, I think, you know, Chris said it, but it complements, I think it does actually complement each other. Both sides complement each other. The four stories on this one matches the roof line and the height of the other one, so actually it looks very nice.
And to answer your question indirectly, Councilwoman, these colors not only complement the amphitheater, but also there's a hint, correct, I'm wrong, of green, and this colored brick complements what's happening with Starbucks' quality up front.
Oh.
And also, if you go over, this is a version of the color that's also on Panera, because that has a little green. If you remember, Panera has that terracotta, a little overhang that they have there. So in our opinion, and we've done tremendous amount of research and color studies and all that kind of good stuff, everything here's going to blend in well. It's not going to stick out like a sore thumb in any way, shape, or form. That's the last thing that I wanted to.
Can we see building seven? Three-story mixed-use.
Are you looking at it on here?
I'm looking at the site plan.
Oh, okay.
But yes, it's page seven.
Page seven?
October 30th. October 30th, thus Strand, page seven.
This is facing Oviedo Boulevard.
All right, so walk me through the mixed-use. Where's the?
Oh, right down here. These areas here are the main entrances into the office, right there. So this bay, your own door coming in, these two doors, and then these two doors made up of about 14,000 square feet of office. Again.
Plus some.
Point of care kitchen, heavy retail, heavy office. It's commercial, it's mixed-use. I'm just smart, I'm smarter than exactly this.
So each bay is about 2,000 square feet.
Plus some of my initial exit, some are like 17,000, if I find this next one, I can get, I think most I could do, probably something from 3,500, if I combine two of them together, yeah. Some are slightly larger, these have the staff above units, so if I got one bedroom above, it's slightly smaller than two bedrooms or three bedrooms. So the floor place, when you, from a structure standpoint, I have to turn that load straight up.
Right, okay.
So that's the only deviation in floor building.
And then they put their signs above the doors, is that what you're thinking?
Yes. It's very faint, it says sign.
All right, black, gray, black.
Very faint.
Oh, it is that.
Yeah, it's very faint. That's going to have to be a different color to stick out more. What you don't see here on this elevation is out front, we have the little marquee signs that have panels which will advertise each one, they're kind of directional weightfinders, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, and we've done studies on how the sign could work, but, I mean, that'll be a little bit dependent on each user.
Right, no, it's a bright time, you may come, obviously, you've seen it before, where say you have a dentist office there, you know, he likes to have reserved for dentist such-and-such king, and I, our dentist has to be king, you know, reserve for dental king, they'll put a sign right there, and we'll just reserve these three or four parking spaces right there. We don't need to have a discussion about that now, we'll talk about that later, but there's been some conversation about having those as reserve spots for whomever, the doctor or physician. They seem to be dictating that more than anybody else. Accountant I'm talking to didn't even mention it, dentist I happen to be talking to would love a couple of little reserve signs out there for his dental facility.
Darren Office Hours type of thing.
Yeah, Darren.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. About 24/7.
No. No, it's just, you know, like in orthodontists, they give, he says, Tom, I get so many people that come in, they just get a tune-up on their braces, they pull up to there for 20 minutes, get a tune-up, and they leave.
Tune-up.
His words, not mine.
That's what it is. Can I remember those days?
Yeah. I don't remember calling them tune-up, but.
I don't remember what we called them, I just remember they'd be expensive.
Another vacation.
Part of it is like doing vacations, I think I could have bought a smile and someone.
What's the grade difference on that thing stucking down that hill? Six feet? Yeah. What you really don't see here, we just didn't do the greatest job, where you can see a little bit over right here, okay? If we have to step this building down six feet for the natural grade and follow, but the existing will be a bulge. So this building will have more animation than was actually shown here. It's just very difficult for us to show it in a.
It's a lot more, and actually, you can see that. It's a lot more height difference than you think.
And it's, trust me, it's a challenge. We're still going through grading exercises to make the ADA issues work. It's a challenge. You know, there's going to be some retaining walls out front, some nice hardscaping and sodscaping, it'll look nice.
Stops and steps, and so it's going to kind of create a lot of interest.
Could you walk us through building, I don't know if it's one or six, the mixed-use building, the one that's facing Park Place?
That's the L-shaped building, which is.
Strand Two.
This rendering is the 3D version, and this right here.
I think that one's called Strand Two.
Strand Two, which is that.
And I know that this is difficult, but if your eye follows this line right here.
Tom, could you go on the other side?
Sure.
If your line follows, if your eye follows.
I can't hear about you, Steve.
If your line follows that right there, okay, that's the animation of the streetscape on the building. This was also extremely challenging because of the fact that every insurance lawn there has to be ADA dapple. So there's no ramps, there's no high-flying stairs, there's no nothing, it has to be ADA dapple. This is Estesowne. Okay, so the only thing we could change was, how do we make this lawn ADA dapple?
Restaurant's still in the corner facing the lake, or?
Both, yeah.
Both corners.
These are, these are set up, have you noticed, all the outdoor seating is here? All the outdoor seating is here, it's tailor-made for restaurants. All of our grease straps will be in the back outside, hidden, all of the HPC is on the roof. These areas right here, hard to tell, this is actual cut-through. If you look down right here, this is the actual cut-through that goes to the backside. So the residential that's above will actually access the elevator that's right here. So come in here, which is that, into this little lobby area, accessing the elevator, that little box right there is the elevator, takes us up to the third and fourth floor of this building.
Yeah, the cool thing about having a flat roof is that we do have.
And that's, you're calling that third and fourth because of your height to accommodate the retail.
Yes, yes. Yeah, these bays, this one starts, Steve, I'm wrong, this one starts probably about 18, and this one goes to.
I think it's 15 to 20.
15 to 20. Again, I've got five feet of an elevation that I have to lose here, because again, from an ADA standpoint, I had to keep kind of everything level, so what grew here was the roof actually grew in that, this is 20 feet tall, this is 15 feet tall, so if you're in the retail style. This will take us up to one, two floors above us, and as you go to the L-shaped building on the other side, that has three additional, three stories of residential facing the lake, which also can access via the elevator here.
And all the AC units are on the roof, including the residential on this one? Or just the commercials on the roof?
Everything's on the roof.
It's one like Park Place, it's not.
That's correct.
Correct.
Which is really awesome.
Cut me a little bit of flexibility on the AC units that I might have a unit that's of sufficient size that can't go on the roof, that I have to shoehorn it around a bush, but it'd only be like one. It's none of the residential units, I'm just worried about some of the retail units and retail uses and how far I can go with refrigeration for a restaurant, for example, that has a walk-in freezer or something like that. There's just rules that I can't, you know, if it's built in, it's fine, all contained is great, but if there's a refrigeration unit, you know, I have to look at it from a weight standpoint on the roof, so.
Oh, that would go behind the building and the parking.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. There's no, there's no physical room to put anything out front. The only thing you're going to see out front is doggy bowls, because we're going to make it extremely dog-friendly.
We're going to change the rules so that you're going to have restaurants that actually.
You're making it dog-friendly? Do you know our code isn't dog-friendly? You just found out?
Yes.
I think Dr. Korea's fixing it.
I think with all the activity around the park, it'd be a good idea to make it dog-friendly in this area.
Who knew? One of the restaurants got a friendly reminder from the health department that evidently the local city has to have an ordinance allowing outside doggy dining. Well, our code doesn't, we didn't know we had to do it, so. They need a permission slip from us in order for the health department to allow them to do outdoor doggy dining, even though the health department allows it.
And doesn't regulate it, really.
It doesn't regulate it. We have to pass an ordinance and give them a permission slip.
Does any of this cost money to the owner, the business owner?
Yeah, they gotta, they gotta apply for a permit from the health department, a permit for Musk, because in order for it, what we give them, it has to be a permit. It says it right in that statute. Statute says we must charge them for the permit, and the health department charges them for the permit. 25 bucks, it's a big deal, but yes, they do get charged. Well, that's got to show, it's Tom Tyson. Keep going, keep going.
The biggest challenge is just the 40-foot building. Construction costs are going up 1% a month, and they're just getting expensive.
Hurry up, get going.
That's what I'm trying. I am trying. You know, what I'd like to accomplish today is to get a definite approval on the elevations, because this gentleman reminds me every day that he can't do a thing, he's just stuck until the elevations get approved, because he has to finish more architectural projects.
Well, the problem is that we can't give you an open answer here, we can give you guidance, but.
That's fine, guidance is fine with me, I just got to.
They could walk into the council chamber and get voted down, I mean, just remember that. That could happen. I'm just saying.
I hope it doesn't happen.
I use Tom as words on this one, is, this is the minimum, Tom, it looks good to me. We just need that as a minimum. Go from there. Add more all you want, but I know they'll always add that somewhere along the line, is, no, this is the minimum, so I like it. It looks really, again, the 3D really helps.
We'll start with Steve, you got it, Stephen.
I'm done, that's it.
You're good?
I like it.
Councilman Brit.
I was good before, but I'm good now.
I'm good.
Sorry about that.
I like the changes. I think it really added to it, it looks very nice.
There you go.
If you go down the B-line to the convention center, and towards the convention, there's a, there's a complex there, is that similar to what we're going to see here? Are you familiar with it?
To the convention center.
I was down there a couple weeks ago, I almost took a picture of it, but when I went back, I missed it.
I need to know, you're looking at direction and that.
I was going off towards I-4 on the B-line, got off at the convention center, I guess it's International Drive.
Yeah, they're up there on the left.
Headed there, and it's right under that.
Yeah, turning off, anyways, just like that picture.
So if I, so if I'm heading to the convention center, I get off on the B-line, come around, I'm hanging a right?
You hang a right to go to the convention center, and this complex is on your left just before you get to the.
I think what it's saying is you take an I-4 to the B-line, getting off at the B-line and heading east.
Oh, no, I was on the B-line.
Oh, you're on the B-line heading west. Is it exit? Exit one, International Drive, or the exit before where the Rosen Resort is?
Exit one. I think it was International. It's one that says convention center, but I think it's International.
Okay, exit one, and then it's, you turn right, and then it's on your right.
On your left.
On your left, okay. Take a look at it.
I'm tied up.
Okay. I can't answer that question for you, I just.
I look at it, and that's, that's where they got those replacements from, I can picture this stuff.
No.
Yeah, this is definitely unique to our apartment.
No, but I think that, I think that was very telling to me, that that's really what you're trying to do here, is very modern, fresh.
Well, thank you.
I like the improvements. I like that you did the 3D drawing so we can see it. I like the articulation drawings, you know, but it just isn't like up to date, you know. I think it's going to be nice, I think these projects when they're built are beautiful. I think it's going to blend, I can see how it's going to tie together now, and it'll be kind of bridging.
Fresh.
Well, thank you.
I like the improvements, I like that you did the 3D drawing so we can see it, I like the articulation drawings, you know, but it just isn't my cup of tea, you know, I think it's gonna be nice, I think these projects when they're built are beautiful. I think it's gonna blend, I can see how it's gonna tie together now, and it'll be kind of bridging. You know, I just like a different style, but that's just my opinion, that doesn't mean that this isn't gonna be beautiful, this isn't gonna be nice. And as Stephen said, you know, this would be the absolute minimum, you know, upscale and even more as you go along. I just figured rather than having, having showed that, I'm kind of wheeling it, rather than having showed that, yeah.
I just need to turn the architect a little something, right now from a timing standpoint, her, going through comments with our SDOs, we should be submitting those in the next week. My goal is to put this out to the general contractors in January-ish, and I use ish, thirty days plus or minus on each, either side of my timeframe, and I'd like to be under construction in March with this. David's group with Starbucks is gonna start performing, my guess is that they are going to be under construction December. He's supposed to close with me right before the Thanksgiving holidays, which it's fifty-fifty, they may get pushed to the latter side of, the backside of the holidays, so he'll close, he claims he's in a position to start construction immediately, so, you know, the holidays kind of play games with us, so he's probably January, I'm probably late March. So, lots of activity gonna be out there, and lots of construction, chatter, noise, and all sorts of good things.
There you go.
Anybody like any of these, I don't mind. Or I could just talk with Mr. Cobb, if he wanted a couple of pictures to put on the walls, so...
Sure.
Sure, yeah, whatever you want to leave.
Let's get it all...
Put them up in your conference room, I'll take down the old ones and put them up in the conference room.
Maybe the ones would be, with this poster saying streetscape?
That'd be great, yeah.
For a thousand, that'd be great.
You obviously can make me another copy, right? Thank you.
You know, it'd be nice if we can get a complete package, you know, like we put together when we first started, so that way we could make a booklet out of it, pop it up on the website, so when people see things going on, they'll be able to go there and kind of see what's being done.
Can I make one recommendation? The cha, the challenge here is gonna be making the construction costs work, and what I don't want to do is put this out to the general public.
I didn't say, Rick, a second.
Let me, let me know one hundred percent that I can afford to build this, and then once I say, okay, guys, we can build this, then go ahead and send it out for, you know, public consumption with all the advertising and the marketing and everything, I just, I'd hate to show something to the whole world that can't economically be built. You know, I'll tell you how bad it is out there, it used to be the general contractors came to me, but now I'm having to go, you know, knock on front doors of general contractors and say, hey, are you busy? You know, I've done four hundred million dollars on the general contractor, he just told me the other day, I can't do any more work, Tom. That's what you're seeing out there. All right? So, we'll leave you these.
Okay.
Enjoy the rest of the evening, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, I'll see you tomorrow morning for a quick one.
Here, not getting out, do whatever I need to. Throw them out.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
So, it's funny about that, uh, little mistake with the money? She moved me back. Yeah, we checked on the website, blah, blah, go to the website, it says, please, this is not to be used to check for... Whether, whether the taxes, I was like, oh, that was the taxes, hey, taxes are paid. So, they paid taxes October fifteenth. She goes, oh, yeah, we checked the website, blah, 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 blah. I go to the website, it says, this is not to be used.
Did you call David Johnson's office?
What's that?
Did you call him?
I told her, she's calling. But yeah, it was funny, it was funny, yeah. I checked on the website, now, so, I'm like, it says clearly on it, no, this is not gonna be used for title checks, if the taxes were paid.
I think they're, they actually have a lean search, though, that was done. Probably.
Yeah, I saw it. But I, she did them early, 'cause that's how this was done. She did the bank, the, um, the loan thing.
That's true.
Like, three weeks ago, it was two and a half weeks ago.
That's true, and then we got deleted.
Yeah. She did it for the first, the original closing date, she had done it for one, and then we did it again.
Hey, it could be worse, we could all be sitting in that traffic right now on seventeen ninety-two trying to get home from Lake Mary.
Dude, I, I, when I was, I told her, when I was coming home, bringing kids, I had to bring it out of Boone High School, heading back up, and it was about four o'clock, and I was already backed up right to Redbugger, right then, four o'clock, and like, oh, this is just...
What did it have?
Three, yeah, like about three fifteen, three, three fifteen. By four o'clock, it was two miles away. Before, the break was closed. It was on this side. Four seventy, she closed from Lake Mary Boulevard to four thirty-four. I think the red signs, I think it's re, actually, Redbugger, was it Redbugger? It's closed because that traffic was all backed there, they won't let them get on, and they gave...
There was a, some criminal activity, guns involved, the chase, the car rolled, flipped, people died.
One person died, four injured. Yeah, that was a, sheriff, deputy sheriff, chase.
What were they chasing them for, what'd the guy do?
Uh, something with arm robbery or something. Something with a gun. Right, on burglary. Is that what it was? There you go, burglary.
They chased him?
Okay, it's all... There are guys who dislike that, it wasn't us.
Teresa, we're back again.
You are up, well...
It's gonna be office commercial. It's the last.
Last, please, let me turn it over to Mr. Cobb, and then Mr. Cobb can introduce and do whatever he'd like.
Thank you, Mayor, this is, uh, this is, I think, the last work session in your series reviewing architectural standards. Tonight, you're gonna be reviewing office and commercial standards, now, the interesting thing about that, in all of your other work sessions, you were reviewing standards that we don't currently have, so they were all brand new. Tonight, we have architectural standards for commercial and office buildings. And so, the staff has been tweaking them, so you're gonna be seeing the tweaks that they've put together tonight, and I think what they do is it really brings a compliment into what you've been shown before, and so what they're gonna show you tonight. One of the things that I will warn you, it's a lesson learned that we've learned throughout this process, no matter what we do, people are gonna find a way to do ugly. And, uh, so we do the best we can to provide a quality standard, it's just that there are folks out there that can still find a way to do ugly. So, uh, but I think...
So, how do we avoid that? What mechanism could be put in place? I haven't figured that out yet.
Well, that's a taste, you know, it's like saying, you know, the new townhouse, you could sit there, I can make a case either way, saying, hey, it's a very nice building, or it's a big yellow blob with windows at the top.
I think building's cool, I just have yellow color.
It's me.
Well, that's it, that's the townhouse.
And that's it, you just get, and that's what you guys are saying, well, that's what they want. I don't think any...
And I told Leanne that too, I said, if every yellow available, that was it.
Well, but I think, well, I think the thing that they've done with these is they've provided a good foundation for us to limit someone's ability to do ugly.
So, when is it going to be set up? And I think it is set up that way, or officially set up, that the architectural stuff comes to us on consent agenda.
That's in place now.
Okay.
You know, you're gonna start seeing those.
And how about all of these codes that we've been discussing, one of these is gonna be wrapped into the LDC, now, there's no F's or buts.
Well, that's, that's what we are going to move forward now, I mean, this is the last work session, you can give the green light today to move on with the same, you know, as you did for the...
And then you can declare it zoning in progress, and then these books will be the guidelines, you know, golden merit.
I think zoning progress, we would have to declare in a, in a council meeting. Yeah, we'll do that whenever you feel like it, and then we would move on to write the standards and bring that to you. We want to bring it as fast as possible.
Right, because we've done all of this work, and so far in the date, we've, we've had consensus in all five of us, that the work has been excellent, but now we gotta implement it. And, you know, give you the tools, that when somebody walks in, you can hand them on the news and say, you know...
No.
Right, you gotta, you know, this, this is your guideline, anything less, you know, you're going to council, because unfortunately, we're, we're the half. I mean, you know, there's an L, we're the half.
To answer your question before, I think we are moving to a different stage now, that not only we will have the guidelines, that will make it available, the final guidelines, we'll make it available on the website, and the pre-apps, we'll have these brochures and booklets for, for the developers to see, but also they will have to come to city council. So, if there is an ugly, you know, project, we'll have the opportunity to discuss, discuss at city council, and you'll have the opportunity to say that to a developer.
So, they have to be enlightened, have a staff recommendation for approval that carries a lot of weight. And staff has to not be afraid to recommend deny. You know, you have, in my mind, you have to sometimes, because, you know, what Brian says concerns me, everybody can find a way to build an ugly mousetrap, so, you know, rather than coming to us and saying, well, this meets our code, but not the intent, I'd rather you just say, you know, this does not meet the design standards of the city of Mobito.
Yeah, and we can have the opposite too, right, where you don't meet the specific percentage of materials that we establish, but the intent is there, and you probably will see that too, that you have good projects that, you know, it's not really conforming to the code, but they are great projects, and you have the opportunity to say yes, the intent is there, so that, so I think that that's the beauty of bringing to city council, in that sense, that it's, have the opportunity to discuss.
What I'm trying to avoid is my absolute favorite thing to do, and that's to sit there and negotiate with them. Rather than just coming in all packaged with a bow on it, which is what Councilman Hankin has brought up, and others have brought up. You know, so that way it just becomes, you know, a blessing, or, you know, if it's in consent, and your recommendations for denial, well, then, you know, we approve consent, it's denied.
I think the fact that we will have to bring to city council already gives us more power.
Okay.
To negotiate, right, and, and I think that Starbucks was a good example, that when we were discussing the work session, you all told them to bring back... Yeah, were to bring back and to negotiate with us, because it had to come back, and, and that already gives us more power to negotiate.
I'll never forget that, when he sat there and said, I build beautiful projects, look at this building. Anyway, go right ahead.
If, if we're recommending denial, I can guarantee you, it's not gonna be on consent. We're gonna have a discussion.
I honestly think it's easier to put it on consent, because just let the consent agenda get voted up and down, and done, out they go.
I would have concerns about due process on that one. If we're recommending approval, then yes, we should place it on consent, let it go. But if the staff's recommending denial, we would want to, we wanna give them the due process of being able to present their project to you. I know...
Yeah, but then that gets council the opportunity to say yes, and wave of the code, and, you know, that's why we have the flag we have around the city from the nineties that we have today, so... All right, well, you guys will figure out process, that's just my two cents, okay?
Should we start? Well, today, Dr. Kruay is gonna present, because she's the one that has been applying the code, so she has much more experience in negotiating with the developers on the project.
Good night, everyone. The package that you received today had two attachments, one is bigger than the other, so the presentation is the shortest one, and I will go through the presentation.
We like short presentations. We like short presentations.
Yeah, so that's why, that was the intention, and even in the presentation, there are some things and some issues and some concepts that we have already discussed here, so I will go very quick over those slides, and I will concentrate on what, on, first, on an analysis of what has, what we have been doing in the last ten years, and also on what are the differences that we are proposing in terms of improving it. So, can you go? So, the elements are almost the same, we give the importance in terms of the site, site design, building design, building form, and accessory structures, next. The, the elements breakdown is also the same one that you saw in the other presentations, so you have the site design with all the elements that are included in what we call a site design, streets, walkways, open space, lighting, building siting, in terms of how you place the building in relation to the street and to the site, the building form, which is the building itself, and all the accessory structures that go with the building, so these are the four main elements that we deal with in the architectural standards. So, it's not just building, it's the relationship of the building with the site and all the context. Again, they sent us to the complaint policies, there are some things that are encouraged, we continue the same way that we did with the other, the multifamily, the townhomes, standards to, we encourage applicants to preserve trees with caliper bigger than or equal to thirty inches, to provide complete streets, to provide community amenities in their sites, when the size of the, the project is compatible with providing this type of amenities, to utilize low-impact development, provide charging stations for electric cars, that's one thing in red that you are saying, it's a new standard. We came up with a number, one per thirty spaces in one minimum. If you have, if you're required to have less than thirty spaces, you'd have to have at least one charging space in your parking lot. We are, we are proposing that to be in the architectural standards. To utilize as possible solar energy and to provide healthy design solutions, both in the site and in the building, and you'll see in the last slides what we mean by that, so can you go? This is just one example of the site design and streets and sidewalks, actually, the picture that you see is the plan for south of downtown Orlando, it's a very small place, I don't know if you have already been there. It is, it has been redesigned in terms of street blocks, and you have a target as the axis of one of the, of the main street. The gray ones, the gray blocks are parking arrages that are behind the building, so I put that, we decided to put that there because it's something that is close to us, it's in Orlando, you can go there and you can check on how it works, and it was a small, of course, a part of a bigger downtown, that it is ours or our city, but we can have an idea of, about that. So, this is a picture of what they have, and exactly all the concepts that we are trying to implement here, they are there. They have a parking, not visible, it's outside, it's on the back. You have corners that are differentiated in terms of structure and architecture, you have wider sidewalks, you have also a focal point. In this case, it's a target which you can see by the upper right corner, it's a different type of target, it's not the common one that you see around here, it has two stories, and you also have some semi-public spaces, you can see there some small corners, some tables, so that's everything that we would like to see in our developments, you know. This is just one, to show you what we have had in terms of office commercial buildings with the architectural guidelines that we, standards that we have since July two thousand and five. We had a total of seventy-four projects that would classify as office commercial, and fifty-four of them were built. I also put there one breakdown in terms of the size, on how much in terms of the square footage of the building. You can see that fifty-one percent is between one thousand and ten thousand square feet in terms of building. We have then some percentages, eleven and fifteen percent between the ten and the twenty thousand, and just eight percent on twenty thousand to thirty thousand. And plus than thirty thousand, actually, that's the hospital and the medical office building, these are the biggest buildings that we had. In terms of type, just, can you go back? Just, uh, the type, these were the types of projects that we got, auto services, banks, childcare, small offices, office parks, office with warehouses. Auto services, banks, childcare, small offices, office parks, office with warehouses, restaurants and restaurants we drive through and retailers and retail centers. Mixed use has been approved, but it has not been built. So these were, you know, and these are just the prototypes. These were not the buildings that are here, but these are the types of buildings that are similar to what we have been approving in terms of size and in terms of type. So you have retail, you have some type of restaurant, freestanding, can you go? Office, drive-through restaurants, recently we had our Panera Bread, drive-through banks, also commercial centers, office buildings, this one has two stories. Car washes, of course, this is a more sophisticated one than we, what we had here, an example. Gas station, we, after almost eight years, we had a new gas station and now we have another one being approved. Auto repair and services, we have had some of them and childcare center, it's another. We had five or six in 10 years that were completely new. So going back to the elements that we tried to accomplish, this is one example of streets and walkways of what is desired and what is not desired. You can see the poor landscape sidewalk and on the left side, the landscape and sidewalk network, how this can really emphasize and improve even the site of a building. You had a, one example and you saw the elevations here from Ovidon the Park, with the landscape and the elements and the people there, it makes another, you know, impression of how the site is going to be. So these are just other types of amenities, fountains, benches, interactive art, all that we are trying to implement. This is just one detail of what these outdoor spaces could be. They certainly should offer city, they should offer some type of focal point, it could be a fountain, it could be one small plaza, it could be one type of art or something like that. Go ahead. In terms of site design and open space in our complaint, we have at least a 25% of the total site must be landscaped, so we have to comply with that. We are here showing two semi-public spaces encouraged and linked to pedestrian network. This is a picture of a, a new hotel in Winter Park, which this is actually what you are saying is a semi-public space. It's not the street, but it's close to the streets, but public have, the public has access to it.
Actually, this, this, this open space is shared with an apartment complex. So they have the apartment complex.
Which is on the other side, right?
On the right and this is the hotel on the left and they, they have this common area that they kind of share. Pretty interesting. It's open to the street, so.
Yeah.
Passing by can also stop there.
The other slide is just to show how you can use the topography. We don't have much topography here that we can use, but, and the local materials and so on. Another example of where open space is more related to the building, not just to the site, like office spaces, that you can have some type of office buildings where you can have meeting spaces that are open, that can be seen, that can be used sometimes by the public, sometimes they, they can't, but still they add to the whole area in terms of site. Go ahead. This is again, we have some options to have zero setbacks, which we now have and almost have in Ovidon the Park, so the landscape would be attained not only by smaller trees but also by some type of planters. So you always have some type of greenery that would be offered, not necessarily in terms of a whole landscaped site, but with some elements that would add to the site. This is just one example of a site design infill project which is in Massachusetts. That was a note, a note mall that it was completely re-renovated and of course add, there were some streets that were added. You see, can see the existing buildings there and then you see that streets are open and other types of buildings with commercial activity were also added. I'm sure, we are showing that because we think about the, our mall that is here and the owner has been in some conversations with the city of what could be done there. So that would be one example of how you could maybe treat that site too. Site design lighting is important. We are making LED lighting as one, one of requirement, which before it was not. Go ahead. This is again, the location of the parking in the site. These are examples of the parking on the back and the parking in the middle and you have liner, envelope buildings that would hide the parking.
We'll go back to the lighting for a second. You know, a lot of the lighting issues we have in the city, you know, they put up the, the cheap concrete pole with that fixture angled down at the top, is that going to be banned, eliminated? More decorative lighting in these parking lots?
Well, that, we didn't put that in our.
I'm talking about it in a parking lot. We've allowed, we've allowed to pass these.
We don't have.
Concrete poles with just a fluorescent type sodium fixture put up top and they're just, you know, cheap.
We don't have to be any type of limitation on the type of pole or on the type of lighting. Now, if this is something that you would like to see, I mean, we could check what, what we could do or offer some options.
Yeah, as a design, yeah.
I, I think we have to add a little bit of something to it. I mean, it's just my personal opinion.
I just brought up to Brian before it all started, hey, let me just get back some lights along somewhere.
You know, LED is a great start, but you know, these concrete poles, I mean, the poles need to be, I don't want to say decorative, but you know, they have, they have to be, you know, a parking lot pole, not, not just this, and I can take you around and show you all the examples.
As you say, everything should tie together. I know, we're tying everything together, the site, the building, and then it's, well, you got a parking lot and put in the cheapest whatever you can on the parking lot and make it just as cheap and, you know, I think that's.
Sort of.
Add, add something a little bit more to it to, again, if, if you're going to see the parking lot, then it should enhance the, what's around it, if you're able to see it. You know, if it's behind, you know, I mean, if it's behind, you can see it, but, you know, if it's totally wrapped and it's a, you know, multi-level, yes, of course, it's different, but, you know, if you have just regular parking, at least we should incentivize it greatly. Encourage, have a base level that's a little bit higher than we have now and then incentivize going even further.
Do you have any type of.
Yeah, and we can also say, well, the ones that are prohibited, you have the ones that.
Right, that's probably easier.
Yeah, that's probably easier so that we don't limit, you.
And I think. I mean, for instance, there's a parking lot right next door to us that has a sword and a half telephone pole with two sodium bulbs stuck to it and they're going at their parking lights. I mean, you know, that shouldn't be acceptable.
I think one thing is, the existing code, the way it is right now, the focus was on trying to keep the lighting under control, keep it from flowing out into the street, getting over into the neighbors, trying to, you know, reduce its impact to just onsite. And so the, the descriptions, I mean, it does, it says a shoebox, you know, a completely concealed source so that you get more downlighting. I mean, if you look at the slide that they had, I mean, the things that they're proposing, you know, as far as having the poles have bases, black in color, LED light, you know, looking at the purpose of the pole as far as its height is concerned, I think, yes, they could, we could start to look at types of fixtures to say, you know, this is acceptable. I mean, if you're looking like, you know, we would prefer a bell shape, let's say, or an acorn shape, those are what, the acorns are what you have above your street, your traffic signal lights right now. Those are acorns. The bell shapes are what we have and will be going in the park. Right now, we just say concealed source, so everybody uses what they call a shoebox, which is just a box with, like the mayor said, with the halogen lamp in the, in the middle of it. So I, I think there's ways, and I, but I think they've started it out right and also.
I'm not criticizing what they, I'm not criticizing what they did. I want to give them more power.
Right. But I mean, that's the thing, that's why I want to try to get to that, so in things that you're looking for is not just a standard concrete pole with a shoebox light on, you're looking for something different.
Something more of quality. And they're out there and there's, there's a lot of them that aren't expensive. I mean, you know, Tom Kavanaugh used them in his, his place and Ashton used them in theirs.
I think one thing too, when you were talking about the parking, we talked about taking the parking and shifting it to the side of the building and to the rear of the building, but still keeping sun in the front. And one of the things we talked about was that restaurants like to have some parking in front because there is the belief that if people drive by and they see cars out front, that the food's good. And so I think you limited it to a row, one row of parking, so at least one row of parking between the building and the street so you can create that look, but they're actually recommending that we, we shift the parking, which is going away from what we normally do, that we shift the parking to the side and to the rear. The retailers are probably going to not like it, but when they start to see how their site can work and how it brings more exposure to the building, I think they'll, they'll come around eventually, but, so if you take that in, in coordination, bring in a higher quality of light, then you're going to start to see, one of the things that they really worked hard to do was to tie everything together, the site, the building, everything, the access, working as one unit. And so I think you'll see, you'll see the improvement in it.
Yeah, we are proposing to allow one row of parking along our period roads, so that the ones that have more traffic, so that would be, you know, something that it would make sense. I can tell you that we already have this type of standard in the downtown, the old downtown, and it has been very difficult sometimes to approve it, to get the applicant to agree to do that. And we had some examples that they came to council because, the townhouse restaurants is one example, but we tried to put some elements on the street, along the street that would form the wall and I think that again, they, it's probably almost done now. They have some pergolas, they have some, you know, low walls, so that at least hides a little bit the parking on the front and at the same time, give you an idea of the difference between what's the street and what's on the, on the side. Another thing that we also changed, we are changing, just one thing, let me go back. We are changing the, if you have a shared parking agreement, today we have a minimum this, a maximum distance of 400 feet. We are increasing that distance to make it possible to have further away the parking. If you have a nice street to walk, that's not going to be a problem. So we are increasing to 600 feet.
How do we make cross connection mandatory?
We also, the thing is, sometimes what we can do is to prepare for future cross connection because we cannot, what's on the, the other side of the property, we don't have any type of jurisdiction unless that property owner is willing to do something about that. I'd say that one connection that we did this type of thing was the.
Well, but, but that, that, that's all going good. Make cross connection a requirement in the code, they can't get approved unless they go get a cross access easement and just make them go get it. And if they can't get it, then they can't build their building. I mean, it's very simple. I mean, we, we, we have such road problems because people have to come out on the road to the next parking lot and they should just all be connected. I mean, it's.
We were trying for the other development, we, we made a requirement that they would, depending on the size, they would have to have two.
Yeah, that's here too. You would have to have two access.
So this is, one of the access could be a cross.
Connection, but again, I mean, it's very difficult because you, the other owner has to be in agreement with that unless.
But if it's in the code now, and even if you don't get it on that lot, but you make that lot has to have cross connects, then when the lot next door redevelops one day, then guess what? Then you got your cross.
Do you have the, yeah.
But the problem is that it's never been required.
To prepare, to prepare for future.
So we're preparing for 50 years down the road and we're preparing for all this infill development and all this redevelopment, put it in the code now that everybody's giving cross access to your neighbor, whether you're getting it now or not, you'll get it later on. Then when that next one comes in, whatever staff members are here or council members are here, they got to connect up.
Yeah, that, that's the idea, to prepare for future, but not necessarily we will get it today. That's what I'm saying, so, but the idea is there.
If lobby says we can do it, we can do it. Otherwise, you know, there's a way to really do it or not.
Yeah, the arguments that you receive, or at least what we faced so far, is that there's, there's a liability argument that they'll make and then there's a, there's a private property right.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I don't really care. I'm just saying, you know, if we, if it's, we can't do it because we just can't mandate in the code, well, you have to, you have to have cross access easements to.
Whoa, all four corners?
If they're required in Altona.
But the thing that if we.
That's actually what I'm going to say, if it is, then if we do it, I don't care.
If we also educate what is the purpose, because the truth is that the cities, yeah, the city's growing, so it's, it's going to be for the benefit of the developers. To have these, you know, easy access from one development to the other.
An example of a cross access failure is Ovidon Bowl. When we gave them the opportunity to hook up to the gymnasium and they didn't want to because their consultant at the time, who gave them very bad advice, you know, wanted additional pond capacity in our pond that we didn't have to give. You know, so now you've got a bowling alley and a gymnasium with a, with a chain link fence in between them. It's the stupidest thing. But anyway.
Between. Race track, racetrack and the.
Well, the red.
Better building.
Yeah, but you see now racetrack, we made them.
But we made them.
Right. So if Dr. Rocker's building ever redevelops, then we can make Dr. Rocker's building. It's there.
If there's a way to do it, then do it. I don't care. I just, I didn't know, you know, that there was mechanisms to.
When you have, when you have one property owner, it's easy. It's very easy. It's, it's when you have multiple property owners.
Oh, yeah, I said, there's mechanisms.
We don't care, I can do it.
Move along.
These are dealing with signs. We would like them to be part of the, complimentary to the architecture. These are just some examples of how they can be in various places of the, the building, in the wall, on the roof or on the marquees. These are just other examples. Your attention of the building, that's an important thing. We want the front entrance and that's already in our code to be, should be oriented towards the streets, common areas, courtyards. Front entrances should also be clearly defined and primary facade should create a street wall to define the public room. One thing that we are making it like another standard, that it's additional to what we have today of the primary facade having three elements, is to make it the 60% of the length of the facade that fronts right of ways to be transparent. Before, that was one option of the three elements of a primary facade. Today, this is going, or at least it is our intent to make it a requirement and be, if that facade is the primary and it fronts a right of way, it should be transparent on its 60% of the length plus the three other elements or requirements that they have to have. So this is one small tweak that I believe that we can attain some more transparency when we look at the building. These are just two examples of an urban example or a more suburban where you have a lot of transparency in both buildings. The parking, we are also proposing that parking spaces that exceed the minimum standards would trigger the need for structural parking arranges. We have a minimum, if you want to put more than the minimum, that would be what it would trigger the need for a parking garage. Instead of allowing a building to have a. trigger the need for a parking garage, instead of allowing a building to have a ocean of parking lot, even if our minimum they don't require. These are just two examples of parking garages that they can have if well designed, they can have a good, a good look. One of them has retail on the bottom, the other one is another type of building, one is very modern, the other one is more traditional, but still you can have a good type of architecture even with building, parking garages fronting the streets. The building site, again, the onsite parking, here we put, again, the minimum of one per 30 parking spaces shall be for charging stations and they should, they should be located on the rear or the side of the building and hidden from the street as much as possible. These are just two examples.
There's a lot of slides here, so I know, we've done a lot of talking or I have, so...
So this is just two other examples of what is desired in terms of parking. This is a suburban one that goes, the parking's on the back, this is, you have a parking garage with retail. Go ahead. These are just the use of corners, some good examples of how you can use corners to enhance the building. Building form, which is the building itself, this is just an example, again, of how you can attain all those elements by mass articulation, different materials and colors. This is a primary facade on both sides, the corner enhancement with public plazas and city and again, the primary facade. Go ahead. Well, these are the things that we have been facing and our, our, our challenges. From my experience of dealing with architectural standards, the retail is the most challenging one because retail, they don't want windows. Offices, they need windows, restaurants need windows, childcare, they need windows, but retail, they don't. So these are not only the big boxes, but the small boxes are also some, they present some challenges to what we have today. And here are just some examples of what happens, blank walls, openings that are not proportionate to the whole building, windows that are fake, that they don't illuminate anything. So these type of things that I consider, I mean, the, today, the most challenging. It's dealing with the retail uses. So go ahead. This is just one example of our challenges and how this is compliant with the code, but it doesn't meet the intent, but if we look at all the elements, it is compliant.
Basing buildings, we can knock down or something.
So then we look, okay, why, why do we think that this doesn't meet the intention? There is articulation, but it's not related to the roof or no relationship with the facade. The windows are vertical, but they are not as much vertical to notice the shape of the window.
Just...
Just that they are, that they are...
Yeah, not to say it's not as square.
You say that, you have a side addition that it's not compliant with the, with the rest of the building, so the color scheme is also limited. So there are many things that could have been improved, but officially, they, it, it is compliant with the code. What did work? These are some examples with the same code that there are other buildings that they were, they worked. I mean, they have a good roof articulation, they have a demarcated entrance, they have arcades, they have different materials, so all that, they are product of the same architectural standards. This is another one, this is office commercial, it's very close by, you know, there is a use of stone to enhance structural articulation, you have a pedestrian circulation in front of the buildings, you have entrance that are very well defined, so all that can be attained with a better design, which is basically what it means. Again, this is just to show you what would be the differences from what we have today. Again, the 60% of the ground for facade length fronting a right of way or a onsite courtyard, courtyard should be transparent. Main entrances, they have to be demarcated, corners of buildings, they should be enhanced and the articulation elements, we are also adding for the rear facade. We didn't have anything for the rear facade. Today, we have primary three articulation elements, secondary two, and rear facade, no, nothing. So we are also adding one at least for the rear facade to have some type of consistency between all the face of the building. The articulation in terms of the form can be attained through materials and volumes to the roof, to the entrance. This is one example of roof design, that it's not pitched, that it's flat roof, but it can be, it's compensated and it's linear, but it has overhangs, it has various masses that compensate for that. Finestration is another important thing, that how we attain that. The bottoms light is a Walgreens. You can see that it, it is in a corner, it has a lot of windows and it can be done. So it's a type of retail. Building form materials, that's one thing that council has requested staff to reconsider in terms of how we would place percentages for the building materials for office commercial. We are proposing the same, to have at the minimum of two materials, but we are putting some limitations on the maximum for stucco, aluminum panels and wood panels. Actually, aluminum panels today, they are only allowed as an accent. I would like to go to the other slide to show that in a more modern architecture, actually, aluminum clad panels are a very expensive type of facade cover that we may reconsider to use them as one element of the facade, not only as a element of accent. You have there stone and wood in a very small building, so these are two different types of buildings, different scales and different uses, so go ahead. Brick, of course, it's a material that we all agree, it's a very strong, very interesting. I just want to call your attention, the bottom one is a Costco. You can see that not only the mass of the Costco is different, it's not a big box, you also have a small plaza there that you can... The other one is, has a nice trellis and pergola, this is a food, whole foods in another part of the country. This is stone, we always wanted to put some type of limestone and a more, with a more modern look, usually stone we, we associate with the rugged surface. You can also have panels that are completely smooth and they are very pretty. So go ahead. Wood panels is something that it's also very interesting in the facade. Stucco, we are limiting it, but this is one, one example of that hotel in Winter Park that it's all stucco and the architecture is very good. So that would be one instance where it would not comply with our standards, but it would be, come to council if it would be the case and you could then either approve or not. Go ahead. Siding is another type of material. What's...
What's the minimum limitation on stucco?
Hmm? Twenty-five percent in building, in commercial. That would be the maximum. These are just some more modern architecture that you have very strong colors and that's actually a question to council whether that would be something that you would consider or not. So we wanted to present to you some other situations where color is very interesting. So height...
Is that a question or just, was that a question you wanted answered?
Yeah, sure.
I, I personally don't like the bright fluorescent colors myself, which is my opinion.
But again, this will come to council in any instance, so that's something, but just to show you that there are some, there could be some types of projects that...
An artistic done right, an artistic way that enhances the look and whatever, but it's easily not to, there's many easy ways not to do that, so...
Yeah. Another thing that we are changing, we are proposing to change is the height. Today, the only height limit that it's bigger than, is higher than 35 feet is in the downtown, the Village Core. We are proposing that along commercial corridors and arterios, we have the, in, in commercial zoning, we have a height of 60 feet maximum. Of course, it will have to see how that would, the transition be done if you have a commercial facing a residential. So that we will have to check how that could work.
Is there an offset with proper?
Yeah. Then we, we also talk about accessory structures. We have already shown to you all those features that we would like to see in a site. These are just some other examples of how you can put pergolas, you can put some brick, even in, in a small sidewalk, you can have some sitting space, so go ahead. Accessory structures, solar panels, they can be used as elements, like in these examples you have, as one facade wall of solar panels, they can be, they can be used as, how do you say, awnings too, and the surface would be that. Then we have finally the health oriented design. Here we decide, we are separating the site could have something and the building could have other types of things. So it would be two types of standards that they would be also part of the whole project, both on the, so that's just one idea of, we could have motivational signage within buildings to, for people to use the stairs. We could have that here, even in City Hall. So this is what we thought about, taking into consideration all that you have already discussed in the previous ones, so we'd like to have your input on how to proceed so we can go ahead and start writing the, the standards.
Want to start off Keith? Do you like the direction?
Yeah.
Implement it going. Okay. Counselor?
I think it's very nice. You guys, you did a lot of work and I see it all ties in together with what we saw before for the residential and different buildings, so I like it.
Stephen?
Hi. She said exactly. I think it's great work. Thank you.
I've been talking all along, so I think you've done a great job, but, you know, implementation, I mean, zoning, if there's some way of putting some teeth into it now as you weave it into the code.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Really great work.
Yes. Great job.
I like, it's funny because when you put the picture of Canary Wharf up there...
Yeah.
I was with the Olympia in New York when they built that. Maybe, maybe they designed it, I've seen a mess of, as big as this room almost, layouts of what Canary Wharf was going to be and all the troubles of how they were going to connect it with the subway line and to see that picture now.
Were you at P C A when you approved Sam's building too?
I don't expect, he never had to come through anything. He was pure code. He was terrible. But it was pure code. I, I, that's, I don't think anybody would approve, you know, so he was just pure like, yep, but here's your bare, no, that's terrible.
We saw that go on and what?
No, that was, that was true. The barest minimum was a code.
That never came to council.
No, it didn't come to P C A either.
Came to council later on when you wanted to put that thing up aside.
Yes, that was on, the special inception was on that time, yeah. And change the use, so I didn't get a car or whatever, something like that out there.
Brian, do you need anything else for us?
No, I'm fine.
Dr. Korea, anything else for us?
Yeah.
Is there anything else for the good of the order? All righty, we are enjoying. Thank you.
Thank you.